You guys got it over there? You got sound, hear me? Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Stevensville City Council Regular Business Meeting here on Tuesday, March 4th. It's 5:30 PM. And I'll call the meeting to order. And I'll remind everybody before we start tonight, I don't know how long the meeting will last, but the polls don't close until 7:00 PM. So there's still plenty of time to get out and vote if you haven't done so. And please encourage everybody. That'll be more important than watching this the next 30 minutes. So y'all can go do that and come back when they still be here. We've got citizens discussion items this evening. I don't have the cards in front of me, but I think we've got, is there a group from Tarleton here? You want to come on up and talk about the Roundup? Yeah, right over here. Good question. You got a microphone and a podium. There we go. Yeah, you're getting warm. You're getting warm.
Testing my test, my test.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Well, my name is Marissa Walden, and thank you all so much for having us here today. We are with Tarleton Roundup for this year, and this is...
Hi, my name is Andy Hatcher. Marissa and I are both the coordinators this year, well, the student coordinators for Tarleton Roundup at Tarleton State University. For us this year, this is the 16th year that we've done this. It's a big service project that we do every year where we get a lot of just Tarleton students and different, just people that want to volunteer with us. And we go out and we serve the community that gives so much to us too, as well as the university. And so, just kind of explaining a little bit of what we do with it. One of our core values at the university is service. And so, part of that that we are going to be, I guess you could say, showing this year, especially as we try to get, our goal this year is actually about 1,000 students and trying to have over about 100 job sites this year. So doing everything from just helping out people just in general to little 20-minute jobs up to four-hour jobs. And so, that's going to be a big thing that we're going to be doing this year and that Marissa and I have been working very diligently on in trying to coordinate. She's going to kind of explain to you a little bit more about what we're doing.
Okay, so you all gathered here today. Something that you all can do is the flyers that you have been given. You can fill that out in order to give us a job site application. Any kind of place that you think could just make Stevensville a little bit better place by us participating and going there and just cleaning it up a little bit. Any kind of ideas that you have for that and send that back to our office. Also, if you're just really excited about this project and you would like to volunteer yourself, you can contact our office and we will get your information. And so, yes, utilize the flyers that we've given y'all and just help us to spread the word in order to make Stevensville a better community and just more beautiful.
Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Is there any limit, limitation of what you do? What kind of service? What kind of cleanup or whatever?
This year, we have new goals of incorporating Adopt a Highway. And so, we're, as we go from job site to job site, we're actually going to slop along the highway and make sure that those have been cleaned. Also, we are providing a document shredding service. And so, that way, we can protect our citizens against identity theft and things like that. We are also collaborating with the Boski River Cleanup. And so, we're going to have students that are going to be in kayaks, go down and make sure that the water's of a good quality level and that all the parks surrounding the Boski River is well taken care of also. And...
Andy, and to answer your question, all the items and things that we're going to do is listed down at the bottom of the job description, anywhere from washing the windows to cleanings, sweeping, painting, those type of things. Mr. Sabin are listed there, the things that the students will be doing during that day and performing for those different job tasks. And again, we're excited about doing it. Again, it's a partnership with the city of Stevensville, Keeps Stevensville Beautiful, and others that are listed that have Progressive Waste Solutions, as well as Bulldog Shredding is coming down to shred documents and those type of things. So we appreciate you all allowing us to partner with you all and for the students to get this learning experience in leadership and service on the Tarleton campus and in the community.
So if we, if you pick up trash, for example, or clean up a lot or something, where will you be disposing of that product?
Progressive Waste Solutions will provide us dumpsters that'll be on the west end of the visitor's side of the stadium. And we'll put all of that debris and those type of things there. If there's any large sticks, things along those lines that need to be shredded or chopped up, Drew Wells is working with us for a location site that we'll be utilizing. So those will get chopped up and cut up along those ways. So we've got all of that handled and we're just there to pick it up and make the community a better place. And again, as well as it goes for cleanup during that day of service.
I just want to make, I appreciate y'all doing that. I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure it be cost-free, cost-naturally all too.
And in the past years, Progressive Waste Solutions would allow us to leave so many bags on the curb. And then, but if there's like four or five, and then we would just take the remaining ones and then they'll send out an extra crew to go around and clean up everything else that we have bagged up. So it's really good partnership working with them and the city to get all of this done. This city has some locations as well that we're going to be working to get things done. So we just wanted to come down today, visit with y'all, let you know what all's going on and the partnerships that's been established to assist us with Tarleton Roundup.
We are also partnering with the Tarleton Recycling Centers. And so, they're going to help us in order to recycle all of those items that we find during that day. And we are also looking for just yard equipment that can help us throughout the day whenever we go to different people's houses, things like that. And so, if you're a part of an organization or a business that could just like contribute to us in any kind of way, we would really appreciate that also, just so we can make it the best Roundup yet.
Okay, anything else? Okay, great. Thank you very much. I tell you, it's exciting. Thank you both for coming up here this evening. It's important, and y'all, y'all take this message back to your group because I know that you've, you've kind of taken a leadership role within the organization and that's, that's really important and we appreciate you doing that. But let them know that, that the citizens of Stevensville really appreciate this partnership. It is a big deal for y'all to step up. I mean, y'all live here, it's your home too, and we're just so proud of y'all and the effort that y'all are making to, to show that. And so, we wish you all the best and this is a great, great event for our community. So thank you. Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, one of the things that they mentioned, which I think is a, is a great initiative, I know that Dr. Chris Higgins in the Biology Department at Tarleton has organized already two cleanup efforts of the Boski River. And now, they've coordinated that with this, with this effort. And it just shows some of the exciting things that are going on with the Boski River Trail. And we also have a presentation from Metta Collier tonight to give the council an update. So, Ms. Collier.
Mayor, council, and staff, this must be beautification night because I'm here to talk about the Boski River Trail that we're doing to clean up the Boski River and do the master plan for the trail. My name is Metta Collier. I'm currently representing Keeps Stevensville Beautiful on the Boski River Trail and Corridor Project, which I'll, for simplicity's sake, I'll refer to as the BRTC. My reason for being here is to thank you for letting me come, and it's twofold. I want to invite you all, personal invitation, to come to the March 20th open house that we're having at the Graham Street Church of Christ Family Center. You'll be getting electronic invitations for this too. But we encourage you to come. It's community-wide. It'll be the first showing of the strategic plan document that we've been frantically working on to get done. And hopefully, in June, we'll be here for you all to pass the document. And then, the second reason here is to update you on the project. But before we start the slides, I'd like to give you a little background about the project and how it all got started. The, in 2011, Ehrath County, the city of Stevensville, and Texstock, working together with Keeps Stevensville Beautiful revived one mile of the river, eliminating dump sites, tree debris, and trash. Thank goodness, there was a member that got a bee in her bonnet about that trash down there, and realized that this was a project that Roundup couldn't do, I couldn't do with a group of my little old lady friends with trash bags. So I came to the city begging Drew to help me get this done. So through a series of events, the three, Texstock, Ehrath County, and the city worked together jointly and got this cleanup done on a mile of the river for major sites, taking huge equipment. It's a tremendous job to get this done and did a fantastic job in two weeks' time. That spirit of corporation and community commitment was the ultimate catalyst that motivated Michelle Dunkerly and myself to travel to Dallas, pictures of the cleanup in hand, and visit with Bruce Estrelane, the Vice President for Grants at the Meadows Foundation. We discussed the city's comprehensive plan for the river and trail and asked him what steps we needed to take to apply for a grant with the Meadows Foundation to help us make our vision of the Boski Trail become a reality. Mr. Estrelane was very receptive to the project and generous enough to introduce us to several notable water river conservationists in the state, one of whom was Dr. Andy Sampson. Our ultimate question to Andy was how do we make our vision for the Boski River become a, a vision become a reality? At his encouragement, we applied through Keeps Stevensville Beautiful for a National Park Service Assistant Grant in the spring of 2013. As you know, KSB was awarded the grant, and Catherine Nichols, thanks to Andy, was fortunately assigned as our NPS facilitator. She's been working on this project with us for the last year and a half. Catherine made her first onsite visit to Stevensville in October of 2012. Since that time, she has made visits to Stevensville on a regular basis and is literally in touch daily with somebody working on this project, either by phone, email, or text. She has been and is a very valuable asset to this project. However, her job is to facilitate, and in our case, let community volunteers do the work. There is currently a diverse, growing in numbers group of 41-plus volunteers working regularly and constantly on this project. This number doesn't include the 23 advisory board members or Tarleton students working on different segments of the project and their classes. Fortunately, we live in a community with a wealth of resourceful, knowledgeable, and generous people. The dedication of volunteers is shown to this project is truly a labor of love, and we've been extremely busy. So I want to show you just a few slides. I'm not going to take much time, kind of where we've been and where we are. The purpose of tonight is for me to give you an update on the project. The vision, Dr. Chris Higgins, Biology Professor at Tarleton, was the chairman of this committee to do a vision and mission statement to be a model river and trail corridor focused on health and recreation, education, transportation, and restoration, all celebrating the heritage of our region. The mission statement, the Boski River Trail Corridor provides stewardship of our community waterway and preserve our natural and cultural heritage, promote healthy lifestyles, and provide educational opportunities for current and future generations. This is the map that we sent in when we applied with the grant. You can see where the proposed wetland area is. That's down at the wastewater treatment plant, proposed trail up to the purple, which is the Cit Park Trail, carry around. This right here is the, right here, this is the segment one of the trail, which is done, that's our trail now. This is the museum route. And then, you can hear the stop, Cit, Cit, and then the new Texstock ramp that we're so excited about. It's going to be the next mile and a half up to the ling of the highway, follow the river foot down, across Graham Street Bridge, down by the soccer fields, and you end up here at the Optimus JC Park. So we want to connect those parks together. That's the ultimate goal. The partners, primary partners are Keeps Stevensville Beautiful, City of Stevensville, and National Park Service. Other planning partners heavily involved, Advanced Tarleton State University, ISD, you can see the different people here, all, all actively involved in the project. Planning structure on the right side, we've got the city council with the comprehensive plan that we're working under. We've got Drew with the Community Services, National Park, Keeps Stevensville Beautiful with our Boski River Advisory Board. Then we come down and we split into an education subcommittee and a community participation committee. The education subcommittee is chaired by Dr. Floyd and Dr. Kathy Ray is the vice chair of that committee. Then ultimately, our goal with the Boski, with the National Park Service is to provide a national, a master plan that you all will hopefully vote on themselves, that will be incorporated in the master plan, the park's master plan. Specific goals are health and recreation, education, and restoration. Timeline, we've got the advisory board that will review the plan in the community open house, which I hope all of you all can attend. And then, the review of the draft by the Parks and Recreation Board before we present it to you all to workshop, to have time to go over, and then hopefully approve and jig. And back to the open house, you've got your invitations in front of you. It's going to last two hours, but it's a come-and-go event. We'll have six tables set up with different segments of the river plan on it so that you can view it and see it, and the community can put input so we can go back and tweak the plan if we've made some changes that need to be made. Then we'll let you all review it, the Parks Board review it, we'll keep tweaking it and hopefully get it passed in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Metta?
If I can't answer them, there are enough of us on here. They'll keep me honest because we've got Michelle Dunkerly here, the mayor's here, Mark's here, Drew's here, and I'll try to answer it. But if I can't, somebody can. Are there any questions?
Metta, I have been told that down at the College Farm Road, the old bridge that was taken down and replaced is still down in that area. And I have been told that that was the first original bridge in Ehrath County. Is there the possibility that that, that old bridge could be incorporated into a history lesson, a visual?
I think that's a wonderful idea.
For the...
I do, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Okay.
Catherine Nichols is all over bridges. She likes them. She likes old bridges. And she's been looking for a bridge to put down in the city park that is ADA compliant so that when we get the, when we, I talk like it's, well, it is me. I'm going to hang my hat on the city too. The Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant that we are so excited about that will connect that little piece of the puzzle there, we need a new bridge there at some point, but we need a new bridge at Washington. I mean, this, this just grows and grows and grows. But yes, that would be a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd just really like to commend the group for their, their effort. I mean, this is something that Stevensville is here because of the Boski River and Colonel George B. Ehrath, and, and the thought that this project is geared toward preserving that corridor is really commendable. And then, just the fact of celebrating the river and all that surrounds it. So hats off to the group and just encourage everybody that's maybe listening tonight to come out on the 20th to that open house. Okay, any other members for general discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission. And at this time, I'll open a public hearing to consider a request to rezone from B2 Retail and Commercial Business District to B5 Restaurant, Alcoholic Beverage Service Part of Lots 32 and 36, Block 139, City Edition. And ask Ms. Chu to give us a briefing.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request to rezone 2115 West Washington Street from B2 Retail and Commercial Business District to the B5 Restaurant, Alcoholic Beverage Service District. This does come forth as a favorable recommendation from the commission to rezone this property. It is located within the University Park Shopping Center. You will need, as the mayor said, to hold a public hearing on this proposed zoning change. If you concur with the commission's recommendation, there is an ordinance on page eight which would affect the zoning change. And if you have any questions regarding the staff report or anything in your packet, I would be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Betty? Okay, at this time, I'll ask anyone wishing to come forward and speak in favor of the request. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask if anyone wishes to come and speak in opposition to the request. Okay, seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I would move we approve ordinance 2014-04.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Hogan to adopt ordinance 2014-04 to rezone as presented. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, that motion carries a unanimous vote adopting ordinance 2014-04, rezoning from B2 Retail and Commercial Business District to B5 Restaurant, Alcoholic Beverage Service, Parts of Lot 32 and 36, Block 139. All right, then we'll move on to item C, and I'll open a public hearing to consider adding restaurant with alcoholic beverage service to the conditional uses in the downtown district zoning classification.
Thank you, Mayor. This also comes forth as a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is actually an amendment to the ordinance, zoning ordinance for the downtown district to include a restaurant with alcoholic beverage service as a conditional use in the downtown district. The downtown district was established approximately two and a half years ago. This would facilitate redevelopment of some of the two-story buildings in the downtown district. It would allow you to have some of the condition, the primary uses that are allowed, maybe upstairs or downstairs, and allow this as a, as a use in the district. It would allow the Board of Adjustment to consider these requests and be sure that this does coincide with the uses in the downtown district. And hopefully, as we said, allow for different types of development in some of these two-story structures which we have around the square. This was a request made specifically by one of the property owners, but it does come forth as a unanimous recommendation from the commission. You do have an ordinance on page 12 which would add this as a conditional use in the downtown district. We also have in your packet a map of the area which shows it, it's actually blue in your packet, it kind of shows up as lavender, the areas that encompass the downtown district. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Betty? Ms. Sabin.
Just so I understand, can, give me a practical, I mean, you understand the example upstairs and downstairs, being different functions. Give me a practical example, hypothetical as it may be. What would it, what would it do practically?
Okay, take the old First National Bank building on the corner of College and Belknap. You could have as a conditional use, a restaurant downstairs. You might actually have with this building, because of the access, you might have living quarters, you might have an apartment upstairs, or you could have another business, maybe offices upstairs. And that would allow the use of that building. We do have some single-story buildings in the downtown area which you can see that been zoned either B4 or B5, but those are single-story, single-use type buildings.
So you're, so the, really the practical difference is in a two-story building, you may have two functional, different businesses in the same building upstairs versus downstairs. That's practical.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Betty?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I'll ask anyone wishing to speak in favor of the, the change. All right, anyone to come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Well, good evening. It's once again nice to see some familiar faces, some new faces too. I'm Michelle Dunkerly, and I, my address is 1442 Private Road, 1214. I live outside the city limits, but I own two structures here on the square and am a ardent investor and supporter of the downtown district. I own the First National Bank, which happens to be the example that Betty talked about. And I also own what I call the saloon because it was Dawson's Palace Saloon, which is on the corner of College and Belknap, and it now has its new garage doors in there. And I'm working toward a lease with a prospective restaurateur, which I think is going to happen. I don't want to say it's going to happen until it happens, but we're real close. So anyway, back to the First National Bank. The notion is exactly as you questioned, Councilmember Sabin, and same as Betty talked about, the, this is a significant building. It's obviously historically important. It's two stories, about 1,600 square feet on each floor. I have some tentative plans. I don't have a tenant in there. The restoration is going to start. It's, as I said, significant, so I'm working with a historic preservationist architect out of the Metroplex, actually, for both buildings. And we have gone through and gotten the First National Bank on the Phase One approval for the, for the National Register. And, and that's significant. It will be probably the first building to get on the National Register in Ehrath County in 20, 30 years since actually, I think, the, the Hickie Place was the last one to get on in the 80s. So anyway, so I have some tentative plans, show you a first story, second story. The nice thing about this building is that there is an ingress and egress for both structure, for both downstairs, and then a separate one for the upstairs. It was a bank building originally. It had a real estate office kind of in the back part of that first floor, and then upstairs, it's railroad car offices, 1,600 square feet, which could be a fantastic apartment. So I'll just pass these, just give you some of these. If you want, you don't have to see, again, we're not locked on these. But it, but it shows you that there is significant use. To say that there would be just one thing downstairs and that you have to have populated upstairs with the same entity makes it challenging because the space is so good. And again, I haven't determined that I'm going to put apartment upstairs, and I haven't determined that we're going to have a restaurant bar ideally downstairs, but having that option is important. And that's really what, what this change will allow to occur. So that's, that's really it. I also want to put in a plug that the downtown was, of course, placed where it is by the settlers because it was the highest point above the Boski. And the Boski Trail, as it takes shape, becomes even more important to downtown. It gives people a place to live, to walk, to enjoy places, and then to have something to eat, and then, with a little bit of luck, something to buy and shop.
Pay taxes.
Pardon?
Pay taxes.
Yeah, that's exactly right. It's a revenue stream that's now leaving this town. I do think, you know, this is unrelated, but it, you all have an opportunity to actually help some of the landowners who, who may not have the financial resources to fix their buildings but want to, you know, to think about, you know, matching grants or something to help the facade or to do something because it really is a beautiful town square. So any questions?
Any questions for Michelle? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance change? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and consider a motion.
Mayor?
Ms. McGan.
I move we amend the emotion as shown in our agenda for the downtown district.
Do you have a second?
Point of order, amend or...
Yeah, we're amending the zoning ordinance. I think you misspoke. You said something about an amendment where, when you meant ordinance.
Yeah.
Your motion is amending the... Your motion is amending the, the.
The ordinance.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, the motion by Mr. McGannell, seconded by Mr. Hogan to amend the zoning ordinance to add restaurant with alcoholic beverage service to the conditional uses in the downtown district zoning classification. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote, adopting ordinance number 2014-05, amending the zoning ordinance as presented. Okay, that ends the Planning and Zoning Commission section of the agenda. I will offer this one comment. I, I think the, you know, the concept of, of having living quarters in second stories of those downtown buildings is a, is a great idea, because it gets people downtown. So, that's, that's one of the things. It's, when you talk about the central business district of the town, that's, that's a great, hopefully, there'll be some more momentum behind that, so.
Well, and, and nobody's building places that look like that either.
Not, not anymore.
It's built a good lot.
All right, we'll move on to the Personnel Committee report now, and Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Personnel Committee met on February 18th and discussed two items of business. The first is renewing a contract with Wethan Associates. The project period will be from February 1st, 2014, to January 31st, 2015, and basically, our city employee benefits, the new benefit year begins on May 1st, so we need to renew this contract so Wethan Associates can go out and find our employees the best benefit plan possible. They do a great job. They also do this for the City of Tyler and many others, and they come highly recommended. They do a great job for us, so it's not broke, so there's no need to fix it. They, the contract is $24,000. And another thing they'll help us with is implementation of the Affordable Care Act. Whether or not you think the ACA is a good piece of legislation or Obamacare, I personally think it's terrible, but we're going to need someone to help us with how we're going to roll that out and how it's going to affect our city employees, and Wethan Associates are more than willing to do that. So, with that, I will ask for a motion to accept this contract.
So moved. Can we add to that motion that we asked him to consult with Obamacare, too?
No, I don't think we need that.
Just curious, just curious.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Sveen, seconded by Mr. Evans, to approve the negotiation of contract with Wethan Associates. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous as presented.
The next item of business we discussed, Mayor, was compensation study in November 1st, 2013. The city staff presented to the council a compensation study of cities that are similar in size, similar in, near, in Texas, obviously, geography are similar. We asked for that in August, and it was delivered on November 1st. I think we had four Personnel Committee meetings. We took a look at that data. We anal, we analyzed it, made sure the data was good, and I think we all came to a conclusion that it was. We decided what type of cer, what type of pay plan we'd want. We decided that we'd want a range plan that, that provides our supervisors with the ability to have a range. I think that we all agree that our number-one asset that we have is our city employees. You know, we're in this business to provide outstanding customer service for our citizens, and the number-one asset we have is our employees, and we need to take care of our employees. And since 2009, I think we've, it's fair to say we've kicked the can down the road. We don't have a pay plan. It's been CPI plus one each year, and I'm really proud of the work that this committee did. Mr. Evans, Mr. Sveen, where there's three of us on the committee right now, there's a vacant, obviously, a vacant spot on the committee, and I think this is an issue that we all came together and, and really worked hard on. Is the pay plan that's on page 16 in our packet perfect? Well, probably not. I don't think it's perfect. There's some things that I'd like to change, but is it, is it something that we rallied around and we had a unanimous vote in the, in the committee to, to approve, and I think it's a, it's a great start. And I'm not going to go over the entire thing, but for those of you that were at our committee meeting on the 18th, we, we went over it in detail, but basically, it's, take the average survey pla, pay for a position, times it by 105 percent. There is a, you need to adjust it for cost of living, so, and I think in the survey, it's about a 4 percent difference between the cities that we surveyed and Stevieville's cost-of-living index. So that will be subtracted, and that'll be the average position pay. So, I don't know if I did a great job of explaining that, but basically, if, if it's a $3,000 difference in the survey, if you take out the cost-of-living index, and you take out, you times it by 105 percent, and it says that we need to get that position to three thou, up $3,000 to get it to average, then we've got a buy-down factor over three years. We could, we could buy it down a thousand per year to get that, that position for Stevieville up to, to what the average is in the survey. So I, I think it's a great start. I think at this point, we're, we all agree this is a, at least a plan that's, that's going to get us to where we need to be down, down the road from now. So, now we give it to Mr. Sveen, and he gets the fun part, which is finding a way to fund this. So, with that, I want to thank everyone that was involved in this. Mark and his staff, the city staff did a great job. I know there was numerous times we asked for follow-up and clarification, and they always responded in a timely manner, and I appreciate that. I want to thank everyone on the committee and the members of the council. I think we did, this is a, a really good start, and I think it's something that we came together and really unified around, and I think it's going to be really paid dividends down the road for our city employees. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to accept the new pay plan for the City of Stevieville and forward it to the Finance Committee.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Sveen to refer the Personnel Committee's recommendation on the Stevieville pay plan to the Finance Committee. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just take just one second and, and compliment Mr. Hogan on his work with the pay plan. He's the junior council member here, kind of got thrown into the mix when Ms. Taylor had to resign because she lived outside town. Casey did a good job on this, on the pay plan. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Not a, not an easy first task to be assigned, but, but I think it's one down the road. I think we'll look back three years from now, and this will be a, a real positive step, and it'll make a big difference, so I appreciate that. That concludes the Personnel Committee report, Mayor.
Okay, any other comments? Save one. There's an echo in the room, and I'm, I'm going to thank the committee, because I don't, I want to restate what Casey said. There was a pay plan put together in 2009, and this, we are now on the path to finally implementing a plan for the first time. And the council has come together on this, and it is a tremendous step in the right direction, because as you said, Casey, if you don't take care of the folks that are taking care of us, then we've, we've missed the boat. And the, the way this happened, I think, was everybody's sitting down and taking issues one at a time, and it's working through them, and we came to a conclusion on each item, and then, then moved forward. And, and I think just proud of the work that everybody's done, and, and look forward to the discussion now with Mr. Sveen and the, the Finance Committee as we carry this ball down the field.
Thank you.
All right, the next item, we'll, we'll move into Mr. Evans and the Planning and Development Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee met on February 18th. Three items on our agenda. First item is the Brick Street Project. Staff has identified areas on East Long East College and Divine Street that need to be, need to have the brick streets repaired. There is a $50,000 budget for this project. That money is, all of you know, comes from the hotel motel tax. If nobody has any questions, I'd be glad to make a motion that we approve the Brick Street Project, $50,000.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, to approve the 2014 Brick Street Project. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous, the 2014 Brick Project as presented.
Second item on our agenda was code updates. The city's currently operating under the 2006 International Code. The ISO is conducted and audited by Building Code Effectiveness. Staff has scheduled the trade boards to meet to review the 2012 International Codes, and staff has responded to the letter affirming the city's intent to adopt the 2012 codes and address other issues. Administration is implementing changes to address the staff comments. This is an FYI, and there's no action needed on the part of the council. I would entertain questions if anybody has.
Any questions for Mr. Evans? Okay.
Third thing on our agenda was a housing tax credit program. We received a letter from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs about possible funding in the competitive housing tax credit program to develop or acquire rental housing in Stevieville. The committee recommends opposing these applications under this program. And again, this is FYI, there's no action. I'll be glad to ask, answer questions if anybody has any.
Well, Scott, just one thing I, I do want to point out, that, that the letter that, that we, we did send back, as y'all recall, highlighted some programs that the city is participating in, and it also highlighted the fact that the private sector is meeting some of our multifamily needs, and so it wasn't just to say, no, we don't, we don't participate. It was to say, yes, we do, and here's how. And, and I think the, the message that everybody needs to understand is that, that we do have tax incentive programs that we, we participate in, but we also have a, an economy that's responding to our multifamily need at this time. And, and somebody that's writing a letter from 3,000 miles away may not understand that, and that's why keeping decisions local is important. So, thank you. So is that it, Ben?
That's it, sir.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Evans. Appreciate that work in the committee. And now we'll move to item six on the agenda in the Finance Committee report. Mr. Sveen.
Thank you, Mayor. Our committee is Malcolm Cross, Alan Nix, of which everybody's, Alan's kind of puny today, and then Casey Hogan. The issue tonight, we met on February 18th, and we're going to discuss tonight and have a motion here in a moment, is dealing with our water and sewer rates. We do that annually. We do it during the wintertime, so that we have, we're taking actually the lower amount of consumption as a way of helping set our rates. One of the things I want to point out, and Mark is going to give all the details about how we built up the number, but there's two things I want to mention. One is, this is an enterprise program, which means that it should fund itself. And one of the things that it doesn't, one of our services that doesn't fund itself is water, and is enterprise. And part of that's because of our rates, and so we're looking to raise our rates to help pay for, pay for the service itself, which is what the intent is of state law. The second thing is, is we have an enormous amount of infrastructure that we have, in my opinion, have avoided dealing with over the last several years. And just looking at, for example, depreciation, just for the most recent past, we have not funded any of the depreciation for the last several years, and we have several, I'm going to guess, what, million and a half dollars easy, $2 million in accumulated depreciation that we've not dealt with, not counting this year's depreciation. So, the rates are basically, the rate increase is based on the need to improve infrastructure and to pay for the service itself. So I'm going to turn to Mark and let him discuss the buildup of the service, but I'm going to, based on the, unless we have negative comments or some other reason, I'm going to recommend that we do accept the new water rates.
Yeah, the, the total impact that, that we have recommended for this year i, is the equivalent of 15 cents on the volume charge of the water. Now, that would generate approximately $105,000 additional revenue that's intended to go, really to put back into the infrastructure. On the worksheet that we had, and, and just to kind of help, Mr. Councilman Sveen had asked me to, to talk a little bit and reemphasize this depreciation issue, and, and what I want to try to do is maybe explain the actual numbers that have occurred, both in 2012 and 2013. Excuse me, our cash flow ability, which is the very last pa, very last number on page 20 that you're seeing, but I'm going to go ahead, for the audience's purposes, I'll state those numbers. But we basically, from a cash flow calculation perspective, we've paid off all of our operating costs, we pay our debt service, and we basically had $286,000 and $238,000 to put back into capital items. That's not just the equipment, but that's also, also the infrastructure. If you, what's referred to as depreciation, but let me just kind of talk about, we have used on many occasions that we have about a million dollars a year in infrastructure that we need to be working on. That's just been a number we use. We don't have definitive reports behind it on the water side. Some others will do that. But if you just take that, and we need to put a million dollars into infrastructure, and we only have $280,000 that we're actually funding and putting back into it, we continue to face this challenge of how are we going to continue to maintain our infrastructure. And we've chosen this year to take an incremental approach to that in the volume charge of this 15 cents. We are going to still continue to be needing to discuss and address this as we continue to move forward, which I know that we have and we've talked about. But hopefully, I've explained really where we are continually the challenge that we're faced and why we are, are implementing this rate. Our sewer rates, we had adjusted. I'll tell you that we, we've had some very modest increases, excuse me, in our water rates over the last few years, but our real focus over the last four or five years has really been on our sewer side. If you'll recall, we've had several projects. We kind of, we've had some issues that we've had to address, so therefore, we were spending a lot of our focus and energy, both at staff level and I think council level, to get those rates to where they're pretty close. And you can see from a cash flow perspective, we're still a little bit behind, but we've definitely gotten ahead or, or getting closer to that, to that means, but we are still behind in the water side, and that's why the recommendation and why we are recommending this rate. This is still an incremental approach to, to address the issue of, of continuing to address these infrastructure. With that said, hopefully, I've answered it the way you'd like it for me, too. We'll continue to, to discuss that we have discussed, and we'll, we'll be talking about future meetings as we move forward. But the implementation, you do, and I think, and I do, I want to thank the paper. I think he did a good job of trying to go ahead and get the word out in advance, but on page 19, there are a couple of sample bills. An average household in Stevieville uses eight to 9,000 gallons a month, so you can see what a, a family of four. The small, single individuals use about 2,000, and then for some of our kind of medium-sized commercial customers, you can see some different samples here. The overall effect, and I always try to tell the customers and citizens this, is really, they only just know what their water bill is. I get my water bill, I know what my water bill is. Anticipate approximately a two, a little over 2 percent adjustment in that, and that's with the garbage adjustment. Notice that the garbage adjustment is in here, which we had already implemented that in December and January. So by the time you, you know, the, the total net effect should be about a 2 percent change in their overall cost that will be affected here. With that, I'll be glad to answer the other questions.
Would you affect it, given the date again, this effective?
And, and really, the, the effective date will be for water getting used tomorrow. It'll, it'll just be dependent upon your redate, but the whole purpose is to, now, we're not going to charge you until, with the new rate, until you start using the water. So, those actual, you will receive those bills. The first bill will be April 15th, which is actually for the month of March water use for those customers, and/or April 30th for those customers, and their, their actual consumption from March 15th to April 15th at that time, so.
Also, as part of the count, of the meeting, I committed to the council to bring a capital improvement plan prior to budget process, and Mark and I have discussed that, and I know staff are working on that now. So a lot of this infrastructure issue is a concern that I have personally, has not been able to fund it. We haven't kept up with a lot of stuff, and what we end up doing, what, what the net gain, or net end product then is, is we end up borrowing money, because we get so far behind, I don't think I've got to borrow money to do it. And it's, it's borrowing money for operational purposes. I don't think it's necessarily a good project, so at, this is my recommendation, so I'll, I'll move that we adopt the new water rates as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Sveen, seconded by Mr. McGannell, to adopt the water rate as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so that motion carries unanimous vote approving the water rate change as presented.
That's my committee, Mayor.
Okay, and I, I want to also thank, and I don't see Nick. Are you here? There he is, hiding over there.
Hiding.
Nick and Walter, Mark, your team working with this committee, and Mr. Nix, if he was here tonight, trying to define what the requirement is, not just what we're spending. And that's the path we're on right now, and I, I really appreciate the work and effort that y'all have, have taken and undertaken, as Mr. Sveen said right now. Developing a capital improvement plan for the city is, is going to get us a long way down the road to understanding, you know, what, what do we need to keep ahead of failing infrastructure? What is, what is the, the rate that that needs to be? And so, that's, that's great work, and just thank, thank y'all for, for staying, staying after that. Okay, the next item on the agenda. Okay, the next item on the, uh, agenda is the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Mr. McDaniel.
I move, we accept the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Sivin, uh, to accept, uh, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that, uh, consent agenda is, uh, approved as presented.
Mayor, just let me ask a question real quick. How's the remodeling coming on the police department?
It, it's going very well. I think they should be pretty well complete in the next couple of weeks.
Is it looking good, Pat?
Couple of weeks?
It's looking a lot better. There's a delay, just some coughing in and stuff.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I, I think, I think, you know, I think it's about three weeks or so. But they make huge progress.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Going along very well. And he said, he said three weeks. I was thinking two weeks.
Okay.
About the delay and some of the coughing coming in.
Okay, great. So, um, so Mark, I guess we'll move to your comments.
Uh, yes, thank you. I, I really want to, uh, just point out that we, uh, do have, uh, several committee meetings scheduled the next, uh, couple of months, and, uh, March 18th and 25th. Uh, then we also will be having April 15th and April 22nd outside of the other meetings. And hopefully, you just got them designated there, and I continue to make rounds and talk to the committee chairs about those, uh, those items as we go into spring. Uh, there's been a lot of question, I've had a lot of folks asking me, how's the, uh, tank painting going at Tarleton Campus? And if you go by there, it kind of just sounds, there's, there's this hum that just goes. I don't know. Got a big tin around it, and, and you're hearing all the sand blasting that's occurring. Uh, but that project should be completed around May 1st, uh, give or take. And so, uh, that, that pro- that project's going very well. And, uh, again, the contractor's doing an outstanding job. So, uh, keeping the worksite clean and safe with all the kids around. But I'll be glad to answer any other questions. I believe the contractor on the sewer line project, uh, is scheduled to begin, maybe started this week, or start, start mobilizing this week. So hopefully, uh, some of those in the Lockwood addition will begin seeing that construction begin, uh, on the, the project we awarded basically last month. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, it, it's getting that time of year that all the crews are very busy, and I very much appreciate, uh, all that they do, because it's, we're, we're about to get real busy.
Okay, any questions for Mark? All right, uh, then the council members, uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, I just want to apologize in advance. I'm going to skip out of here. I got to go to Alan. I got to be at a banquet. So if I leave the coun- it's not because I'm trying to avoid anyone, any of my colleagues, so.
Yeah, okay.
I apologize in advance for that. Uh, maybe Walter, maybe trying to avoid Walter, but, um, just want to say a quick note, uh, the 13th President of Tarleton State University and former Chancellor of the Texas A&amp;M System, Dr. Barry B. Thompson, passed away on Saturday, and I know there's a lot of people in this room that, that knew Dr. Thompson a lot better than I did, um, but just a great man, and he'll, he'll surely be missed and made a, a great impact on higher education here in Eraz County across the state of Texas. And on behalf of the council and the city, our condolences to the, to the Thompson family. There will be a memorial service on campus Sunday at 2:00, and I'm sure that there will be a lot of Barry B. stories being told at the, at the- I know I, I never worked with the guy, and I never, uh, he wasn't president when I was here, and I can tell you, he called me up one time and said he was two hours away, and we were going to the horse races in Arriadoso. So I can only imagine, um, the stories that are going to be told on, at that memorial service at, at 2:00 on, on Sunday. So I hope everyone can, can go out for that. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Dr. Cross?
Yes, um, uh, you'll note that, uh, one of the committees that's scheduled to meet on March 18th is the nominations committee. Uh, its purpose is to consider the filling of vacancies, uh, on the, um, building board and also on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And to that end, I would like to encourage people to, uh, apply for membership on these, uh, commissions and to contact, uh, I guess Cindy Stafford for, uh, applications that we'll be happy to consider on the 18th.
Do you know which one's vacant right now?
P and Z in building. There's two, there's actually two vacancies on P and Z, uh, currently. And, uh, since, since we've got these building boards beginning to meet about the codes, uh, we had one vacancy we're trying to get filled before.
Okay. Anything else, Dr. Cross?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sivin?
I just want to say that I've heard nothing but positive things about the light at Ollie and Washington Street. I think it's a great addition. I have, it's amazing how you can actually make a left-hand turn there coming to the south.
If you don't mind, can I piggyback on that for just a second?
Please.
Tech dot informed me that there, the light at Baxter, the old light, is going to start blinking here very soon, and that's the transition to remove it. So, uh, if people start wondering, it's not going to be because it's out, it's because it's coming out.
All right, okay.
Making sure you're aware.
All right, great. Anything else? Mr. McDaniel?
I just have one thing to say, and I'm sure everyone will agree with me. Now that, uh, winter has pretty much savaged us all, bring on the springtime. Let's plow the gardens and plant some seeds. Thank you.
Second.
Yep. Mr. Pendleton?
I've got nothing.
Mr. Evans?
Nothing.
Okay, well, I want to, uh, just say congratulations to the Stevieville Boys Basketball Team. The farthest they made it in the high school playoffs in the history of the school, and just hats off to you. And I know, uh, the Texans are headed to Allen. Hopefully, they'll bring back a-
And the Texans.
And the Texans. Hopefully, they'll bring back a trophy with them, so. Uh, with that, I will, uh, call us into executive session in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law of Chapter D, Government Code, in accordance with Section 551-071, consultation with attorney.